Please be advised that this council meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to our YouTube channel for the public to view. And that's something that we do at every council meeting. Please let our minutes show that all of council is in attendance this evening. We do have a couple who are missing, actually. Jason Smith is not here with us, and we have Lou Patterson. And we also have members of our staff and members of our public. So welcome to everyone, and thank you for attending this evening. We appreciate your being here. Item three is approval of the agenda for this evening.
Well, move your worship. Second is.
I moved in second week to approve the agenda for this evening. Is there any question? Hearing none, others in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item four, approval of the minutes of our prior meeting.
I moved that the minutes of our prior meeting. Are we talking about July eighth meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, the June one fourth meeting?
Yeah.
Be approved as presented. Second.
Motion's been moved, and second, if there's any question on that motion. Hearing none, others in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Any conflicts of interest for this evening in terms of agenda? No, we will move on. Item six is correspondence, presentations, and petitions. And item one is our public, our in-person public hearing regarding zoning bylaw number B forty-six point nine amendment. I'm just going to read a little bit here. And we'll get started. MVP seven one G three N has applied to rezone the property located on Rockland Road, having a property identification number of PID one oh two eight six nine eight seven to permit the development of a sixty-two, or is it sixty-two or sixty-four?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four unit, four-story apartment building. The statutory notice for the public hearings was posted on the Town of Heartland website on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Furthermore, the planning, review, and advisory committee recommended approval of the applications subject to terms and conditions at the June twenty-fifth meeting. A public hearing was undertaken on July third, twenty twenty-five over Zoom. In addition, we've received three written submissions outlining the following concerns: Proposed building height. Compatibility with the character of the surrounding community. Capacity of municipal water and sewer infrastructure. Alternative location preferences, for example, the downtown core. Traffic impacts. Local employment opportunities for prospective residents. Capacity of local schools to accommodate additional students. At this time, I would like our Chair of the Finance and Infrastructure, our Deputy Mayor Stuart Faragay, to present some information that he has wanted to share with our group this evening.
Thank you, Your Worship. The information that I'm about to refer to, most of it has recently been released through the media in an article written by Adamir of New Brunswick News, published July second, twenty twenty-five. And in it, he refers to some of the basic economic and demographic conditions under which not just New Brunswick, but New Brunswick municipalities are under at the moment. So if I may, just to cite this background information, population of New Brunswick last year grew by twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-five individuals. All counties in New Brunswick saw population growth. Victoria County being the lowest at plus thirty. Carleton County, twelve times greater than that, at three hundred and forty-three. And importantly, as New Brunswick starts to get younger, reversing a trend that has been in place for decades, population of New Brunswickers aged zero to seventeen grew by a total of approximately five thousand people and now constitute one hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-one individuals. Senior population grew at the same time by approximately four thousand, who account for one hundred and ninety-six thousand New Brunswickers. As New Brunswick gets younger, the average age in last year was forty-four point two, down from forty-four point seven. Carleton County's average age is forty-three point six, making us the fifth youngest. And that is important to notice, to notice that only one county in New Brunswick of the fifteen is younger than the national average, and that is Sunbury County, which accounts for CFP Gaistown, not being the only county in New Brunswick that is below the national average. The second, third, and fourth place positions are held by counties that have the big cities, Frederick and St. John, Montecristo, and the Vire of the Act. But our position as growing younger is significant. The economic growth in New Brunswick grows slightly year over year, last year being one point eight percent, up from one point seven in twenty twenty-three. The New Brunswick labor force last year grew by three point five percent and now comprises its highest number ever, four hundred and thirty thousand three hundred. These demographic numbers indicate a reversing of the trend of rapidly aging population. In twenty sixteen, the average age was forty-three point six. In twenty oh six, it was forty-one point five. The oldest county is the county that includes Minto and Chipman, where the average age is forty-nine point nine. The growth of our population obviously necessitates the need for housing, all types of housing. And the options in Hartland have been very limited. But even though they've been limited, we know that there's significant demand because during twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, a total of twenty-five percent, almost twenty-five percent of the properties in Hartland changed hands. Our local vacancy rate is extremely low, and the lack of housing options contribute to the labor shortage. All Western New Brunswick communities are actively working to incentivize housing options. We are doing this in an environment where all municipalities in New Brunswick will be experiencing an assessment freeze imposed by the provincial government for fiscal twenty twenty-five in the twenty twenty-six tax year. And as recently as earlier this week, the provincial government has indicated that they are proposing to overhaul the property tax system, leading to further uncertainty. Our community faces significant infrastructure investments in the coming years. This will be more challenging if we do not, or are not able to grow our assessment base. Stagnant growth impacts tax rates. The trucking, manufacturing, agriculture, and service sectors are all impacted by labor shortages and the lack of housing options. In New Brunswick, we've seen that communities that cannot grow lose by the services over time, such as volunteer fire departments, minor sports programs, lack of volunteers, pools, post offices, shared services like libraries, swimming pools, et cetera. The preference, not just for Hartland, but every community along the Western New Brunswick River Valley, is to work with reputable New Brunswick developers who employ New Brunswick's tradespeople. Thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome. I wonder if, just for the sake of those who, because it was a lot of information, if you could just clarify what you mean for our guests about an assessment freeze and what impact that has on our municipality?
So every municipality in New Brunswick, the vast majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. And if you are, like many New Brunswickers, you've seen the value of your homes and properties increase on your assessment notices each spring. The province of New Brunswick has taxed assessments, I believe at ten percent for the last number of years, meaning that if market conditions indicate your hundred thousand dollar property has increased in value by more than ten percent, the most they can increase your assessment is ten percent. So the cap has been in place, but now the cap is being replaced by an assessment freeze. So at some point, they'll determine the assessed value of all the properties in New Brunswick, and that will be the number for a period of time. That diminishes opportunities for municipalities to increase their revenue. So based on your assessed value, multiplied by your home community's tax rate is what you pay from property taxes. So Hartland has been very modest over the last five to six years with regards to tax increases. I don't believe that anytime taxes have increased by more than the rate of inflation. Whereas Woodstock, Carleton North, Southern Victoria have all seen the maximum allowable increases over the last two to three years, or five, say. That hasn't happened here, in part because the assessed value of the homes and properties in our community has gone up significantly. So assessment freeze basically tells us that source of revenue is going to be eliminated. And as a council, and if you've ever listened to the council meetings or attended them in the past, you'll know that we've been committed to, to everything we can to keep our tax rate as low as possible. So an assessment freeze means just that. And when the provincial government announced that they're overhauling the property tax system, we really don't have any clarity on what that means at this point in time. I don't know if it could go in any number of directions. But what we do know that for this year, and it's certainly until we get more information from the provincial government, that again, as to uncertainty, do our financials take direction as a full movement.
Thank you. So we will now proceed to the in-person public hearing. I look forward to your respectful feedback. I ask that before you speak that you raise your hand, and I will call on you, or actually just acknowledge your hand raising. And I would ask that you state your name and your address before it's returned to speak. So the floor is now open.
Yes.
Oh, Warren, pretty well, they'll die.
Do you mind standing for us? Please and thank you. You'll project so much better.
Thank you.
We're tied for him. Thank you.
I have a question on process. The question is whether or not we approve the zoning to an R five. So if it comes that it's no, is there an opportunity to offer an alternative zoning, rezoning? Or is that just off the table completely?
So I'm just going to clarify with our CNO. Are you going to, for the questions that we can't answer, because we don't have an answer at this point? Is it something that we will get an answer and then? Okay. First and same under, okay. And so if there are questions that can be answered, would that be you and/or? Okay, perfect. So that's when you're going to get some clarity on? Or do you have an answer to that question?
That will land use plenty of questions, so it could be that for consistency to have our director of the service mission provide a response for that.
Okay. So we've made notes of that, and we will, we will seek out a response for that, okay? Okay. Because it does have to go to our planning directive. Yes, in the back, sorry.
Silent on Port Royal Street. Just do, if, if the, if it's not approved, the R five is not approved, what happens then? Particularly, you have a river in the Arctic a little while ago. Building is supposed to start in twenty twenty-five. So by that extension, the planning must, to build must have already started. So what happens if purpose denied?
Question first, okay. So that again, will have to go to our planning directive. So we've made a note of that as well, thank you. And I did see another, yes.
Shelley Clark, one four seven Rockland Road. And if you know where I live, where my parents live, and who has them, yes. We will be the ones that will be the most affected by four-story units. I need to read because I, I can sing for you and not be nervous, but talking is different.
We were glad they'd start singing as well.
Well, I'm going to have to put on my glasses because that's how old I'm getting.
We all have to go later.
Okay. Well, this is, I'm going to read you what I've written. Lee Brenton Shelley Clark requests that you reject the proposed rezoning of the property PID one zero two eight six zero eight seven on Rockland Road, Hartland, from an R two to an R five. Personally, and I'm going to get into personal things here because you've stunned arrested our concerns and you talked about them a little bit already. Personally, four stories high, approximately forty-three feet in the air above us, is not only intrusive, but we will have total lack of privacy, loss of light, and overshadowing for half of the day. So about two o'clock in the afternoon, we might see the sun. This means that the two top floors will be able to look into our windows and see everything we do in our posting yard. We would like you to know that we're currently looking into the right-to-light rule for neighboring structures that cannot exceed the forty-five degree angle, and we will request a daylight and sunlight assessment of our property with the proposed structure in mind. Like I said, we, I put down stuff about the traffic, the traffic volume around the school, security concerns such as no police presence in our town. If you count fifteen minutes, they're here once a week, in the courtyard and the library, that does not work. This building would be so close to our student population and our senior population with the nursing home and three senior apartments close by. It's a huge building for a small town. This would probably, now even tall as building in town, doesn't fit in effectively. I've also raised the, the care about emergencies, evacuations. Could we handle a fire? Could we handle the bad storms sweeping on top of the hill? Have you thought of the ledge problem that's there in that case? My father farmed that land for many, many years, and there was always a problem with ledge. How far down will they have to go, or how high up will they have to build in order to get that building put up? I have these concerns, concerns that we have. We do not wish to stop progress, but we do not wish to lose our rights to privacy. We believe in R two or R three is sufficient for this property and question sincerely Brenton Shelley Clark.
Thank you very much.
Hey Brenton, Rockland Road. I have a couple of questions. Is this a done deal? Okay, the other question is, are you, are they planning to build low-income apartments down by the old S of?
Down by Old S?
Yeah. Low-income apartments.
Oh. Oh, there is a, there is another proposed project. But I'm, I'm not certain of the status of that. The best thing.
Oh, that's, there's no, nothing's been sold, and nothing's been assigned.
I know, but I can see that big town. You have low income? Have we bought further, the crack hits? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes.
Your Worship, eighteen Hawthorne. My question was about the property taxes. I get no, we pay our property taxes to the product. And are they involved, like, all of it back to you, or portioned back to you?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent? Because I'm finding, I moved here from Banquen Run. Property taxes in this town are very high. Now, maybe on the other side of the river, I'm not. But our property, mine are a lot higher than yours, can be. Like, I'm not paying right now, and I'm still on that, I'm on that ten percent increase every year, where they've increased my, because that's the maximum they can increase it right now. And I'm still not at where, what I paid for the house, and the assessed value is not where I paid for the house. So if I jump me up to what I paid for the house and increase my property taxes as such, I might have to consider, because it's just, I know people who live on Banquen Run in cities who pay the best property taxes in this town, and there's not really any amenities here. Actually, no. But the new rec center, for me, as my, because I don't have any children, I don't have any grandchildren, I don't have any family in this town, there's nothing going on in this town. I moved here because it's a fresh start. I wasn't moving to Woodstock, but I decide not to. I'm here because I have family, born so, or there's a question. And I grew up in Jupiter, so not like I'm from Banquen Run, I'm from Kipsville. But do you want to move back to, that's for sure? But, so now you say ninety percent of our taxes come here. So that's a huge budget then, really.
The.
And our room, like Rockland Road, that's the other thing I want to ask. Are they going to stop the trucks when I'm on the plane, when I'm, yeah, the plane is going up? And down? Yeah, once this new facility, when the new thing comes in, because can we not stop? This is a truck route, can I not just use the one of the four at the other end of the industrial street? Instead of using Rockland Road and the racetrack, it goes along with it, the ATVs and dirt bikes and everything else. It's a road, it's somehow, maybe that heavy trucks and all the jacks, I live, they were in a coffee suite in a facility. I had thought, oh, I'm going to age in the place, I'm a veteran. I thought, tired, I just drag my suitcase across the road and move into the facility. But that's what's apparent, is totally no, it will be moving to some veterans' facility, some of the community when I hit that stage. The whole concern, veterans should remain in their homes as long as possible. That is, right now, it's hard to find help in these communities. I've had, I've hired seniors from Woodstock, I have manstries from Woodstock. My repair people, when I bought the house, they committed to get everything from me there from Woodstock. That's not a lot of amenities and workers here in the house. Anyway, but again, to really have a question, a question about the taxes, enough on the rest of it, to know how, so I can have the, all of this, and the excess traffic that's going to be on the street on top of the sixty-four units there, and then the buildings that are going on in the rec center. And there's no other outlet than Rockland Road. It needs to be some other way of competing with these communities other than just the one street. Especially to be busy, traffic, truck traffic already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, James, ten thousand and twenty-three. And first of all, Mayor Worship, Agent Merchant, and Councilor, so I want to thank Council for the work that you do on behalf of the citizens of Hartland, Woodstock. As public servants, it's often work that goes unnoticed and unthanked, so thank you for that. And for me, this is a dilemma because I believe that people in our country, in our town, in our province need affordable housing. So I am not opposed to development, and I hope that the council doesn't look at us as being people who are denying development because that's not the case. We are in favor of development, but like, it's already been stated. We feel that an R five zone is a bit more than what we would be comfortable with, especially the way it's written in the bylaw. Because it counts for, yes, at this point in time, sixty-four apartments, which is a lot, but also the potential for more. And if this bylaw goes forward, then that potential is already incumbent for that to happen, so. And I would just state that I think that there are a lot of people in the Town of Heartland who are dubious to this right now. That your level of difference or indifference is based on your proximity to this development. So just bear that in mind. And last week, Farmer Kirk did an excellent talk on the Zoom call hearing, and he was able to take a lot of the questions, and I thank you for this. Haven't had quite enough time to digest it, so I ask the question that's already here, forgiveness please. But he mentioned that there's a credit meeting, and that was a new firm for, for me. And I wondered who, I understand it was made up of individuals from all municipalities in Northwest and Association, but who represents Hartland on that committee?
That's Councilman B. Passions.
Okay. And just wondering, if all the members of that committee would have visited for sight, and would there have been an assessment for safety and, you know, the traffic, and I think there's something in here that says that you may consider including something, the effects of local transportation network. My recommendation would be that you do, not in July in August, but towards the school leaders, because it really is a high-traffic area, more than what you might think. And I noticed that Doug Dixon in his article from May first had mentioned that there was reference to incentives for developers. And I guess what my question could be is, when the town sold this property to his league, were there any commitments, formal or informal, by council members guaranteeing the rezoning of this property from an R two to an R five in order to accommodate sixty-two to sixty-four apartments?
Oh, you asked me to, no, there's no, no, we can't, we don't, we can't indulge in that.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and I guess my last point would be in the bylaw itself, and it's, I don't know which one, I'm not just kidding.
I didn't know that now.
I turned it off during pitch off the stand. At the bottom, the, yeah, you'll be, I can tell. I'm sorry. Somebody's, I don't know why I was in the meeting. Yeah. Thank you. That any future development expansion or intensification on the subject, part of it, including additional walking unit buildings, extending to the existing buildings for new accessory structures beyond those shown on the approved site plan, leaves subject to review and approval of the development officer. As part of this review, the development officer may require confirmation of municipal servicing capacity. I would challenge that that shouldn't say may, but shall require that the review of that should be done if there's additional units to be placed on. So if we had a preference that we didn't hear, it would be that, that the property would be rezoned, but rezoned to zone three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Simon, the Port Royal Street. My question is about the traffic. Am I correct in saying that in the review for the traffic, it said that this quarter here is one point five kilometers away from the proposed development, so didn't feature into their traffic report?
She emailed me that, sorry, that's on her, I think she emailed. Okay.
I had emailed after he said to verify I got this to bring it to council, because it was one point five kilometers away. So it would not impact the rezonies that they would make out for traffic.
So we were informed that this corner does not impact that building. I would like to state that that corner doesn't impact that building, because that'd be only exit unless you're going like.
Down, playing in the.
Down, playing in our valley. So like, and somebody not to drive this road for kids and traffic. I can tell you that if I stand across the road to go take my kids to school, because I don't have bus access twice a day. But um, I nearly get run over at least twice a day.
And.
So um, if, if we could reconsider the traffic impact survey, please, I would be really grateful. Because I don't object to more housing. I agree we absolutely wouldn't need more housing. But uh, that, that road, honestly, in our opinion, doesn't have capacity for sixty-four units up on the hill. Plus the forty-eight by the arena. And whatever else is planned, I don't know anymore that's planned, but that's a lot of traffic on Rockland Road. And as I currently already get nearly run over, uh, yeah. I really appreciate the speech. I know, that's great. Thanks.
I'm Crystal Pomergras, this five sixteen Rockland Road. Um, just since this hasn't been mentioned, and I had emailed and got replies back about traffic and one of my concerns was this intersection. Because most of the time it's fine, but as you know, during peak morning and after school, traffic get really does back up. So I had inquired about that, which is where the reply was. Um, saying that it was not, it was one point five kilometers away, so it wasn't being considered for by them, that it would be something considered by council. As well as they did reply that there will be ninety-six apartments. So that would be looking at almost an additional hundred cars on the road when you're here at the meantime. I don't see how that's feasible in this location, especially with, I know we are looking at putting in additional apartments on Rockland Road as well, which is going to be more traffic. So this is building to another solution is being made for traffic. Um. And school buses, because I know that I had heard and that they were considering um, a right-hand only turn here. But that would school buses be able to make it around and transports be able to make it around the turn to come back to the site if they need to? Um, and what would be the solution with that? Because I had heard that a proposed, because I don't know, I guess, what's with this decision, but I heard that was a proposal. Um, another thing that I had messaged about, which is that I found it. Sorry. I sent a long email, so I'm going to give you a thought about what's inside of the document here. Um, just the water capacity. I know it's kind of few, I don't live in temperament, so I'm not on that water. I don't know what it's like. But speaking with friends and who are not here today, um, they have mentioned they have kind of water pressure issues. With water coming into their houses and things and what will be impacting with that? And I know that, does the town's current water system support that? Are you going to be upgraded? How's that impacting? Also, again, also, I'm really, I want the housing here, but I'm with everybody else in the fact that it needs to be like an opportunity. It's too big.
Thank you. Yes.
Simon again, fourteen Hawthorne Street. So I, I also have a little more question on the water. You mentioned, mentioned in the effect used there that the water sewer has been evaluated to be sufficient. But in previous meetings, there was a discussion about doing consulting during a survey and that would require some upgrades. So as far as, and then there's also was the discussion about provincial support in paying for those upgrades. I want to understand what I believe was also being revised down, problems not, that's not going to contribute as much as they mentioned. I would like to get a better understanding of, is the water system going to be upgraded? What is that look like? And when is the funding coming from? As you mentioned, the finances are already on the straight. Like, we, we, the only way to deal is with taxes. We're stagnant and dying. Uh, but if with Anna's broader question, there's a mention of, you know, an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. How is that going to be expected costs for upfront of whatever gets needed? Roads redoing, the roads are controlling, if the red community not covering that. As well as the water system, the sewer systems, potential capacity increases in the school. Um, do we need more in the fire department? Like, there's a lot of utilities around here that potentially are upgrading. Now, what is the revenue versus cost comparison? But now I'm looking at feedback basically to feature.
Who is, I've heard about you online.
At twenty, only twenty-four would be right. Yeah.
Twenty-five, I should put you on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, twenty-five, but it's on.
So, I've given you the mentions on my website for. For next year. You want to include that?
And, and going further up, because obviously the bowling is expected to be here for the deckers at least. And. What does that look like in terms of expected future costs versus the revenue? Sorry, one, one, I was going to ask, safety on, safety on the road. So as, as we mentioned, there's a lot of kids that walk up and down the sidewalk. And it'd be a hundred, ninety-six boxes, just for the first round, the, the documents specifically say that they, they want to go for additional development. There are, there's a one, one and a half kilometers limit that kids, within that limit, can't take the bus, which means that the kids are walking. Um, and that, you know, there is a, there's a very large driver like that, and that means vehicles coming in and out. Often, ideally, young people who have jobs leading for work around at the same time. So you have a significant, significantly greater number of children and vehicles possibly. In addition, um, there's already, there's many road, off-road bikes and ATVs racing up and down that road. With that minimal cars, significantly increasing the risk of accidents.
Thank you. We should consider, there's a lot of feverish writing around here, so we can, so we can gather information uh, more and more, uh, because we do want to keep you informed. Yes, I'm sorry, we have time.
I'm Crystal five sixteen Rockland Road. Um, another question that I had already posed to Connor, he emailed, he was unable to answer the piece. He said that there's been no socioeconomic characteristics that puts your tenants down. And I know that um, uh, you had mentioned about the, the unemployment and um, companies needing, needing workers. Uh, in the area, but I'm also wondering what the cost of the rent is going to be? In relevance to what these jobs are that are available in the community? And is this something that's going to be priced out of a lot of locals budgets? Is this something that's going to be, wondering what the price is? I know there is eight, you mentioned that, that there would be eight low-income house, low-income apartments in it. Um, included in this, but I'm wondering if anything has been looked at that, if like, this is going to be something that actual locals could afford?
Yes.
Low thirty mile sale drive, man. Um, I don't want to present all these problems without offering a solution. And in my mind, it's the height and size of the building that is the main issue. And if you could hold them to the R three, which offers um, multi-unit dwelling. To forty, twenty-four units, but with the option of going up to forty-eight. But keep it at three lo, three stories, two would be better. Three's okay. But that would be, yeah, two, you know, two's the best. Yeah, two is the best. The biggest place in town right now is the day and Ross at three levels. So. Everything else is two or one.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. My name is Lila, ten Church Hill Street. Um, I just want to echo these rumors on the traffic, um, crossing there. Um, like there's a, where specifically where I'd rather cross, like the Rockland Road, um, where we would, there's like that. Um, crosswalk fades so fast and we nearly get hit like so, we go all the time. And people, they don't look, they don't stop, they have no context. So um, besides the fact that that would so much increase the traffic. Um, I would hope that the council would consider more, you know, more signage, more things like the, the speed limit. I'm actually a little worried about that speed limit sign at, or like the, like, because it is directly before my street. And even I know my street is coming, I'm looking more at that sign than I am the crosswalk that is about to happen. Um, so. Uh, Churchill, so it's like two streets across. Um, yeah. Um, and then of course, just um, the, the potential um, danger to the students, the bad people addition. Um, you having like, young kids just entering the school, I don't know much about the capacity of the school to handle. Um, that's really why this follows security, to see how everything is there. Um, but yeah, that, the, the overall safety of our town is, is a big one for me. Um, having been on the, the other side of trying to hire people and bring them in in previous roles. Um, I understand that we need for our housing here, um, and want to see our town grow. Um, and part of why I'm moving back, having grown up here, living just even in another part of our county, and coming back to her, you know, I'm very. I'm excited to be in a town that cares about, exposed, and cares about um, the red department as we do and the fire department. Um, and I appreciate how well this seems to be developing, but yeah, the, the overall safety in that world. And um, Simon had mentioned, um, in terms of the financial impact of water and those replacements. Um. My concern also would be just how much are we prepared and is the council prepared to um, put? Into developing and upgrading things ahead of um, it causing a strain on the resources? And not becoming a complete issue that people don't want to come here and it's going to take too long to address. Um, that we know there is, and we need to act in advance of and send a response to. Um, that would be a question and concern for me.
Completely.
I have another question.
Yeah.
The, the speech signs move. Um, it'll be there for the rest of this week, it'll be moving around our community. Uh, it's, it's not meant to be stationary at the place, it's going to come around and we. See concerns on Rockland Road and that's why we have that room first.
Yeah, no, Aspen's great. It is, it is great from the beginning. The time you did that.
I'm trying to, I'm sure it comes across the river when I was free, because I get the same problem over there.
Because unfortunately, all of our streets seem to be impacted by weeks of being sand and, uh, you know, all, we all do. I live on Main Street and it's a drag, it's a drag strip down here, but, um, so I, I understand that. I can appreciate your concerns. Yes.
There, I didn't expect to do this. But I'm a Smith, one from Ohio, I'm from Brooklyn, as you know, we are right next door, the proposed place. And I want to stand right now and say that we're not against development. If it was a nice cul-de-sac, like President Biden is, and big patient, but uh, this huge sixty-four unit, four-story building next door. Is really not what I would want at all. And I just felt that I should get up and say, I sit in my window every morning at night. And I see all of the traffic going by and to have that much more potential, uh, cars and traffic going is something unreal. And I watch every morning, this little, we have three little children. And I must say that I pray for them each morning as they go out, because it is, it is precarious there. And I see her come back every afternoon with them. I see the seniors walking daily up and down, some walkers, some that are potentially blind. And they walk, and they walk, and they walk all the time. And we have three, at least three, right there next door of seniors apartments. We have our nursing home, we have our school. And to have that much more traffic with that much potential for traffic there is just unreal. So I just wanted to stand and say that I'm against this kind of a development of that bigger building. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm, I live at ten Hawthorne Street and I'm not against development. And I'm actually glad to see there's some affordable housing. I grew up in poverty and I think it's wonderful that people could have a nice place to live. So I'm not opposed to it. But when you look at the neighboring developments, this building is out of sync with our community in that part. And I can see as a council, it's on the edge of town, as a developer, it's on the edge of town, it's a great place to put that side of the building. But I really think safety um, should trump all other things. And I can't see how we can have a building of sixty-four and potential other buildings. I did read the same article that the deputy mayor was referring to, and yes, we are growing. Future is unpredictable though. I heard an article today on the radio that talked about with the cap on immigration. How we will be in a negative growth in Canada. Now, that might not be in current Canada, but it's in Canada. Because of the decline of the cap on immigration. And so the developer, I'm sure, needs to make money and I'm glad it's a developer who looks like they'll care for the building. That's terrific. But personally, I think a building, a something that allows forty-eight and then some other things that might be compatible with it, would be more compatible with us as a community.
Thank you. This is the first call for comments. Yes.
I'm just on additional, additional condition, so. One of the considerations in our five zoning, as, as, as I read the documentation, is that it needs to be close to amenities, it needs to be close to um. Facilities and, and have minimal impact on the amenities, speak well like them. And looking around the town, there's a part of that right there, there's a ready level. There's walking distance to the shops, would provide additional business to all of the, um, all of the businesses here. And thus help them to be driven. There's a number of empty shops in the, in the bowling bay. Uh, and if you're living up there, ninety-nine percent of people are getting in a car to go to shops. Getting in a car, might as well go to the store. Whereas something, yeah, and I know it's not timeline, and that'd be a different discussion. But developments in the center of town would be significantly, in my view, be increased employment opportunities and revenue opportunities for the town. If you do need to have something that big for revenue, but it's a bridge, it doesn't solve the problems, it doesn't solve the track during, or doesn't solve the water soon or that. But at least there's additional benefits for a location.
Thank you. Yes.
Still five sixteen Rockland, I just want to say one more thing, kind of feeding on Simon's, um, which is, this is a tourist town. It really like, I'm from the city. I love the city. I love development, bring it in. I would love us more amenities here than we have in the city. But. I just can't imagine, I've only lived here for about fifteen years, but coming around the golf course, looking across the beautiful Hartland, because it is beautiful. And seeing a four-story apartment building, that really, apartment building's only twelve, let's be real. And seeing that on your skyline of looking at the town of Hartland, but it's something that people come to and take photos. And see as a tourist attraction, it just, more stories, I just had to point that out.
Thank you. This is the second call for comments. Yes.
I like an eye, my loss, be right beside the saints. It's. It's kind of. You're, you're keep saying sixty-four units, but in our online meeting on Tuesday night, there was definitely two more units going up there, each.
There was sixty-two and then changed to sixty-four.
Yes, but there's actually two more units going up there, sixty-four each.
Right, no, no.
That was said on the online meeting.
It was the, potential, they had the option.
Yes, so they will be going up. It's a matter of width. That's, we don't have anybody that's been around contractors and. They don't make money with one, they make money with two and with three. So you're not talking about. two and with three. So you're not talking about sixty-four apartments, you're talking almost two hundred. That's what you've got to look at. You can't look at just always that there's going to be sixty-four. You can't look at that. You've got to look at what's going to happen in the big picture. And what that's going to be, being down the traffic, going up, and the safety of our students, yeah. I boil at various times in the morning. My, my work is kind of different than most. I don't have an eight-five job. Sometimes I have meetings and I sit at home and I take them and I don't leave until nine. Other times I leave at seven, so I'm a bust. And I can tell you, in the fall and through the school year, you're sitting there at the end of that road, waiting for traffic to come down through there for quite some time. And a lot of times, it's hard to think this is fogged. Uh, I'm really concerned that somebody's going to get there. So, and again, I, I'm like the rest of the here. I'm not against developing something there. My preference would have been if they would have worked with the man and put senior homes up there. It would have been this, when I was talking to a lady, I don't want to name her name, I don't want to get her in trouble. But I was talking with the people at the nursing home and they were getting five calls a week for seniors apartments. It would be easily built with no problems. And it's definitely an even standard. But again, I'm not against something going in there, but you've got to use some common sense. And we live here for a way of life, too. And that's being forgotten about, I feel. We don't, I, I'm not a city person. I have to drive in the city. By the time I get out of the city, I'm just a nervous wreck. I don't know if you've ever been to break from on Friday, but if you want to have to take a nerve drill when you're done, that's good. So, and so when I come, come back to town and go traveling, it's a place to relax and recharge. And having just sixty-four apartments staring at our home, because they are going to be built parallel with Mur, the Smith and our property line, both be off the property line. So they're going to literally be looking in our backyard. It's hard to get an idea how high four stories is. Building would stop, go into the entire and look over, there's three stories there. They can see on top, the third story can see on top of the long roof. So add another story to that, add that stereo to the house. It's, it, uh, doesn't fit the pattern.
Thank you. This is the third and final call for comments.
Yes. I mean, I grew up in a little town in Juniper. When I joined the military, my first posting was farm. So I have lived in cities like the corner, lived in Calvary, I mean, I lived in the city of Courtney, when I grew up. So this is the smallest community I've lived in besides Juniper. And one thing I've noticed from up west, crosswalk signs, they only have some painted crosswalk. It, it doesn't, it's not going to last for self-rescue or sooner. Have you ever thought of a solar flashing and crosswalk signs that people can activate? Then you don't have to worry about looking down, you can, you can look, you can see those lights, especially at the nursing home, those, uh, care staff that are over there. I see them try and dodge that sometimes, you know. You'll see that, there's supposed to be something on the, really, because there is not going to be one. And it's not going to last very, even, like, even if there's flashing safety signs somewhere. So, uh, because I do watch her and she's my neighbor. And also the little kids come home and they're, they're my children, like, for the children. They're like my, my, my children. So they're sort of like their grandkids. I think that's possible to have somebody else's kids to stay out of something with the grandkids. But anyway, that's a suggestion, maybe some of that type of, uh, solar, we have lots of sunshine here. We can run, we have flashing solar lights, crosswalk signs, we can possibly have some here. I don't know how we fit that into the budget, but we need the developer to put it in. Again, I'm not against having a development either, because if there was more rentals here, running through here, I would probably move in. If those white buildings had been finished, I would have rented there instead of buying. I'm going to find a family, upstairs, somebody bought into it. I'd like one to walk through these walk-in shops and not have to drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you would have been pretty super hot.
You would have been my neighbor then.
Your worship, members of council, I have three questions to ask you. The land that you're proposing, is that all part of the high school program at one time?
Yes.
How do you get into provincial asset? For the town's asset, with no property, for sixty-four human apartment building? My second question is this. You're taking recreation land, proposing multiple units down there as well. You have no access to that ground. The road that is then across the Esso property has never been ceded off, nor has it been taken out of liability with regards to our water system. If I'm not mistaken, that has to stay for some time. So how are you proposing to get into that property when you're putting that development in? My second or my third question is this. Has there been any study done for the capabilities of this town to supply water and sewer from this proposed development? I think that, uh, council, yes, wants to promote the town. But as far as a four-story building goes, we had those in nineteen eighty, August twenty-fifth, fire burn a plate in them.
We have happened.
So, you know, but I'm questioning, how are you planning on doing this? There's been no indication of that. Council written, we know where I'm coming from. This is something that's been on the agenda for a long time. So how come this rose is set now? I'll leave it with you.
Thank you. Yes.
So, uh, one thing I didn't bring up that I meant to, and I just got a little nervous. Uh, it speaks about ledge here. I don't think anybody realizes how bad the ledge is.
I do.
The school has actually moved back because of the ledge and the cost. Uh, I mentioned I brought that up at the online. The ledge is so close to the ground. When I till my garden, I get ledge. If you don't believe it, become, come on up, I'll show you the rocks, but they're near my wheelbarrow, but I haven't gotten rid of yet.
I built two houses up there, ran on top of it. So I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. So this building won't be forty-three feet up. It'll probably be fifty-three feet up, because they're going to have to bring in fill to work on top of that garden.
So that was our third and final call for comments. The floor is now closed. You also have an opportunity to submit your comments. Actually, I would encourage that. Um, a lot of the concerns that you brought up this evening are certainly valid. Um, and I appreciate all of them. And I think, I, I want to express that this council has been alluded to the, you know, uh, decisions filed. Absolutely not. That's, that is, first of all, it's not permitted. Uh, there is a process to go through, and I'm, I'm glad there's a process. And I think that the information that comes forward is valuable. We appreciate your being here. We appreciate your comments and your concerns. And all of the, um, concerns that you have expressed this evening have been documented. Um, we as a council and, uh, staff will be looking everything over. Um, and please, please believe that this is still in consideration. So, um, thank you again for that. Uh, the deadline date for your comments is July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and they can be provided to council through our district office, through Western Valley Service Commission. And thank you again for your time and CD.